Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, the September the 29th, 2023. The time is now 6:00 P.M. The regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad will now come to order in person as well through Zoom. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? Debono, would you please lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Debono.
Here.
Griege.
Here.
Oboltry.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agendas. Council, have any changes that you'd like to make to the agenda? You can take a motion, please. Sumuk is second.
Second.
Call him, please.
Debono.
Yes.
Griege.
Yes.
Oboltry.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item three, policy item and staff reports. Mr. Ruder, do you have anything?
Ms. Mayor, we have a Housing Now update. Michael Uerman is here.
Hello. Good day, everyone, council. Thanks for having me again. So I wanted to take tonight, I think tonight you're going to get a kind of an overview of some housing stuff.
It's a reverb.
But me?
No, it's me.
You're good. You're all right. You're going to get a little housing from me tonight. But I wanted to come to the council today to give you an update on where things stand on the Housing Now program. And in fact, we've hit the $2 million threshold, which is great news. That's what I was looking for. As you know, we set out to create 100 units by 2025. We've received 14 applications at this time that will actually result in 141 units. So we've exceeded the goal. Seventy-nine of those units will actually have the CDP restrictions. The seventy-nine of the units that are receiving direct funding or the residual of projects being more than like 10 units amounted to 141. You'll see in my staff report that your $2 million investment is generating $35 million in private equity in the city. What I would actually say, that number is a little low because Holy Trinity is only in here for 3.5 million, which is really the eight units that they were targeting at first. But that total private cost is 19 million. So when you add in that extra 15 million, you're up close to 50 million in private investment. To date, we are actually about 93,000 over the 2 million with tap fee deferrals and incentive fees. However, if you recall, when we set up the program, the idea was that after the direct gap funding that the city was doing, we were going to continue on with the tap fee deferrals for any affordable housing project. And your 4% contribution that you continue to put in the Economic Development Fund, I think when we started, is actually like 2.5, or sorry, 2,250,000 is what actually was in the fund to begin with. So you do have currently in the fund the additional 93 that's required, as well as the fact that all 93 won't be spent this year. Those fees don't come due until time of building permit and also a time of when they record the de-attractions, when developers actually get the payments. So I think you're helping to consider the other two applications, which we'll get into tonight, the funding agreements, one of which is the college. But the only other thing that I would prescribe here is that what I'm currently recommending is that you put a pause on applications unless you see attrition from a developer. So if someone decides they're not going to follow through on their commitment, then those funds may remain available yet. And I also am making that recommendation for another specific reason, which is Prop 123. I have a presentation for you to opt into Prop 123, a residential form resolution here in a minute. But that program, the state is kind of building the airplane as they're flying. And there are three specific applications on this that you actually have in this program that are going to also be going after Prop 123, Holy Trinity, and the two projects with elevation land trust. And so as those funds and that program becomes, as you know, Prop 123 created the state affordable housing fund, and the state's kind of making new regulations for how those funds can be used. November 1st, again, I'll get into all this in a minute, but November 1st is the deadline to opt in. But until that guidance really gets clear from the state, I would suggest that you hold off on doing any more funding awards to make sure that future projects try to leverage that additional funds. And so we should have a lot more information in the coming year. As you know, the state's fiscal cycle started on July 1st, so they're kind of starting their first awards of that program this year already. So I guess my point here is that my recommendation is really strongly based on that idea of how do we in the future continue to leverage your funding, to bring in more funding from the state because the councils match, especially because the state of this program really wants to see a roll call match. So it'll also give you the opportunity to kind of reflect in a year on how you guys can use this Housing Now program to continue that. Right now, though, you do have three potential projects that are lined up to access that once you opt in and five applications. With that, I would answer any questions. In my memo, I put the status of where projects are. And we have had, two months ago, we had direct conversations with the applicants. So as of right now, there hasn't been any attrition. Everyone's still actively working. And the only other thing I would say is that there is a two-year, everyone has executed their contracts absent the two applicants tonight. So there's a two-year time window for them to pull the increment. So that's the other reason that holding off a year until next year, next fall, that's when you would see any kind of attrition because that would be one of the cringe slaps if they haven't actively pursued their project.
Questions from council?
Michael, so Holy Trinity is not applying for additional grant funding or they?
Yeah, so they're on the agenda tonight. They did. They have applied. They did not get the transformational affordable housing grant, but they have, and we just did the letter of interest for $4 million for stronger communities. Again, jumping ahead on the agenda, but the reason that is before you is really just an administrative change because the original funding agreement said transformational housing. The new funding agreement now says stronger communities. And the state, for the documentation for that grant, requires that agreement to be updated to show that documentation. But yes, they have filed for a $4 million ask for stronger communities now.
And we originally had allocated some, and they filed through, so they've got to apply. Other questions?
Are you good? So you kind of answered my question, but you didn't. So my question is, you go back and contact these people that applied for these grants and see if they're actively progressing on the project. So what do you consider actively progressing? Design?
Yep. So yeah, so whenever I've talked to, they are in, you can see, so I guess in my table here, you can see design, construction, remediation, planning, design. So basically, if it says planning and design, that means that they have, they either said to me that they are working with an architect or working with an engineer.
Next question I have is kind of trivial, but not. So we have this money sitting there, this $2 million. Did we ever put it into an account?
Yep.
That gets interest or?
Oh, I don't know about that. I don't believe so, Mayor, because it was committed, so.
Okay, so that's not standard operating.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm just cha-ching, cha-ching, thinking what $2 million could have caused.
That's amazing.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's nice that this, that was a bit, some of my questions on how the construction is going. That's a good job.
Do you know how close Arizona, Livework, Lofts, and Timber View are to being completed? Will they be completed by the end of the year?
Timber View should be completed by the end of the year, and the Livework Lofts, they had an ADA ramp issue, but I believe they resolved that, so I think they're now in their construction.
Okay.
Last I talked to them, that's what it was. That was two months ago, so.
Thank you for bringing us out.
So, Michael, I wanted to ask you, you said we've reached the cap expenditure. Can you please repeat your reason or justification that we should continue looking at further expenditures if you've already reached?
Sure.
That cap? And if you don't mind just going into a bit more detail?
So if you remember, there was three programs we created under Housing Now. There was the vacant downtown commercial properties. There was a new construction. And then the reason this all started was because of tap fee deferrals. And the tap fee deferrals are for new construction where we're not, you can't, because you're an enterprise fund, your sewer, water, electric, and gas funds are enterprise. So basically, you can't waive tax fees, right? You have to pay them. And so they're an inter-fund transfer. The reason that I'm suggesting that you continue to do the tap fee deferral program is that when you have any kind of applicant come forward for affordable housing, they're normally under a traditional sense, and in the future, going to be applying like Holy Trinity for stronger communities, right? And having a local match, even if it's just the tap fee deferrals, is really critical for them accessing additional funds and also puts skin in the game for the city. The reason to me that tap fee deferrals is kind of a low-hanging fruit for the city to continue doing is because if you think about it this way, you're adding new users to your enterprise systems. So you're not, you're actually making, you're actually making those systems whole, or not whole, but stronger by having additional users. And you actually make that money back through user fees, right? So once that meter starts spinning, we're paying the water bill or paying the sewer bill, you're actually going to get that money back pretty quickly. And you're taking money from one fund and making your enterprise fund stronger. So it's a really, in my opinion, it's always, whenever I advise any of my local government clients, that is the easiest matching fund to do while showing any external funder that you have made a commitment to a project. And to be honest with you, the way we set up the program, beginning the 4% allocation a year into the Economic Development Fund, that, those tap fee deferrals will, don't represent as big of a commitment as the original 1.6 million.
Okay, so you're advising that we exceed that with tap fee deferrals only?
Correct.
And the point you're making is it's benefiting the town anyway by sharing the burden of future capital expenses over a wider customer base?
Yeah, you typically, I mean, with what you guys charge for tap fee deferrals, you'll probably see a return from those users in about three and a half years.
Okay.
So if I put those additional users on through the fees that you generate, and that, I'm going to call that a wag on that because I just did this for a different community that has their tap fees are a little bit longer than theirs, and theirs, it's a year and a half. So I'm guessing about three and a half. I haven't fully calculated that, so. But just knowing where your number is and about $10,000 for all your taps, and theirs was, so anyways, it's an educated guess.
Okay.
But it's around three and a half.
That answers the question. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ruder, we originally allocate, because we've got a $2 million cap. I thought we had allocated up to $3 million, but we had, we put a cap at $2 million, but we had allocated three, correct?
Ms. Mayor, I don't remember. I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I've always, since I got here, I've only heard the $2 million.
Because one of the reasons is that we had, I mentioned this way back, we had put $2 million toward what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So then the other million dollars, we were going to try to find and leverage that other million dollars for additional funding to dollars, somebody else, if it was there. How is it getting any of that contribution?
So that discussion, I don't think was ever formally adopted via a resolution. So I think it was, when that discussion occurred, was during budget season last fall and was part of the discussion on the marijuana fund. And again, to your point right there, Prop 123 is that funding. And it's just a unique moment in time because of the, because that was voted on by the state through last year's ballot. There is now, previously, the legislator just would create funding inside the state's budget, but now there is a dedicated funding source voted on by the voters in Colorado, and they're trying to readjust how their, all their programming. Again, I will say, as a consultant who's advising on Prop 123 to a lot of my clients, I'm watching the airplane get built as it's taking off right now. And so I'm very interested. I think the program that's going to be of most value to Trinidad, there's two, the low-income housing tax credit program is seeing a major shot in the arm as far as additional funding, which means more product awards in the next few years, as well as the homeownership piece and gap financing for homeownership, which is exactly what elevation land trust is trying to accomplish. So those two programs in particular, I think, will be most, by opting in, will be the most important things to access funding for for the city of Trinidad.
And it just seems like everything else, at the state level and the federal level, is that they, the rules are not completed as of yet and will continue to.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Ruder, on this, being that he's recommending a cap, do we have to have a resolution to put a cap on this?
It's probably not a bad idea, Mayor, so we can bring that in future meetings, just so that that's a policy that's solidified by you all.
I think I'll remove that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Any other questions from council?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a bit.
Yep.
Item three B, Smithsonian exhibit presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, the council, and everyone in the audience. My name's Ken Chapin. I'm here to share a little bit about Smithsonian exhibit. That might be understating a bit. We've sort of outgrown our seams. We've, I don't know how much you know about this Smithsonian, but Trinidad applied and was selected as one of 10 host cities in the state of Colorado. The exhibit's in Walsenburg right now. We are third. And I'm here on behalf of the Creative District. I've partnered with the Creative District to produce the Smithsonian and all things Smithsonian. So I have prepared these 10 slides for you. First one, you'll notice the dates on there. Those are really the outside dates. The dates for Smithsonian that are really important are December 1st through December 13th, or January 13th. The Smithsonian show itself will be at the Commons at Space to Create, where Goodnight Moon is right now. You can go ahead and click. Before we go too much further, I want to thank you all for your support. We were awarded through the Tourism and Marketing Grant, which is a huge help to us. Some of what we're able to do because of that investment is spread the word quite widely. And we'll be producing a Smithsonian guide, 10,000 copies of that that will be distributed wherever no Los Anamis and Colfax counties. This is a bit aggressive on our part because most communities that host this exhibit focus on their local community. But as we were starting to produce the companion exhibits, we quickly discovered that our relationships are not bound by geographic lines on a map. And so we're following familial ties. And every time I talk to somebody in Trinidad, they're related to somebody in one of these other counties. And the stories of Trinidad are reflected in the histories of these other communities. So that's why we're reaching as far out as we are, and we're super excited to not only have this funding support nor produce these guides, but we've got really wonderful media partners that are going to allow us to give regular updates on the radio and expanded coverage and distribution of this guide between now and probably early February. So thank you for that because it was a huge help right out of the gate to know that whatever it is that we've created, we'd be able to spread the word on. Most communities that are hosting the Smithsonian, you're required to, you know, host an 800-square foot, comes in 16 crates, build it as the instructions say, and host three conversations in the community about whatever it is that you want. And then they encourage you to create what they describe as a companion exhibit. And so while most communities that I'm aware of check those boxes, we currently have a total of 33 events taking place over a six-week period, 18 companion exhibits, 15 events in the community, some of which have never taken place before. Some I would be happy to tell you about, others are a little tentative at this point, a little bit heavy lift, but just by my math, we're about 10 times what normally happens with this Smithsonian show. And there's really intention behind that. There are two things that we're wanting to do as a result of Smithsonian while we have their brand in the palm of our hands, which I must tell you is very useful. We want to increase social capital. There are some trend lines forming in the community right now. Volunteerism is down. Look at any board. Cartopia is gone. Blues Fest is gone. Other beloved events in the community are feeling a little weak right now, whether it's the rodeo or the parade. So while we're doing the work on the surface of making the Smithsonian six-week event something that we hope will fill some of the gap in the community, there are also, as you can imagine with this many events, many points of entry for people in the community to be a part of it, and as well, many opportunities at the organizational level for us to partner and collaborate. And you can go ahead and click that slide if you haven't seen this yet. If you don't know me, you might know me by our work, Goodnight Moon. It looks innocent enough, right? Just a children's story, but children's literature, people underestimated that story, too. But as a result of that, we've had over 5,000 people visit that exhibit, about 70% of first and third graders within a 60-mile radius. Many of them have returned multiple times with their families. So it achieved the goal of how do we create an attraction like this that likely wouldn't be seen by people who live in Trinidad, but provide this to the people of Trinidad and bring people in for micro-tourism? So we're pretty excited about the results of that. You can go ahead and switch. And here, I think it's important, you know, I've been working with the Creative District for about a year now in one way or another. And you can see in bold type the part of the mission statement that we're really focused on. By bringing people in for these events, we're going to have a positive economic impact. But as you can imagine, with something like the Smithsonian, which is usually all about history, that in all of these exhibits and public events, that's what we're doing. We're shining a light on the history through a number of domains and partnering with just about anybody in this town who, whose work involves the history of Trinidad. So we're really excited about the number of people who are on board. You can go ahead and switch. These are just some examples of our public events. I won't go through them, but there are events that are generally open to all of the public. And then we're also having, as I mentioned, as part of Smithsonian, required to facilitate three conversations in the community, where we have six so far, some of which, one is matriarch, one is patriarch, where we'll both celebrate the matriarchs and patriarchs from the past up to the present, that helped towards the community into what it is today as an opportunity to transfer knowledge and wisdom from one generation to the next. So we're not just honoring our elders, we're going to learn from them in real time. So we've got partnerships with schools and groups of people who will be coming in for that. Another one that I'm really excited about is the future of work. We have, in many of these projects, we have local, regional, state, and in some cases, national partners that are coming in to offer their perspective as part of these panel discussions. I just left a meeting early with the emergent group in Trinidad State, so they'll probably be a part of that panel discussion. But we really want to, that in conjunction with what we hope ends up being the most fruitful job fair this town has ever seen, that we'll have sort of a rail to remote with the Colorado Broadband Office and Startup Colorado and the Office of Future Work. So our aim is to provide opportunities, whether it's jobs, internships, scholarships, OJT, for people from along the spectrum of age to find an opportunity to advance themselves economically. So we're really excited about that panel discussion. All of this, it's a Trojan horse with the Smithsonian. It looks like art, but it's actually artwork. So you can go ahead and switch. These are some of the companion exhibits from Trinidad State to the Masonic Temple, if you can believe that they are on board for opening up their archives and doing an exhibit of their contribution to the community. Fisher's Peak's on board. We're going to do one with the river. We've got two new today. So people are really excited about the opportunity that Smithsonian presents. I've been working on this for eight weeks. This is basically what you see as a result of eight weeks of undefined attention, if you go ahead and switch. One of the things that we're doing is a railroad exhibit. Right now, we have 27 rail organizations in the state of Colorado and any state that touches this, plus Montana and Nevada, who have committed to contributing something to this pop-up rail exhibit. Some of these same people are part of our job fair. And it appears that for the first time, Amtrak is likely going to be part of our job fair, which in my conversations with people, is the first time that's ever happened. You can go ahead and switch. Another exciting part, most of these exhibits are about Trinidad, Los Anamis, wherever no Colfax counties, and now the word is starting to spread. This is the first exhibit. It has been, it is currently on view at History Colorado. It's been there for a year. It comes down September 29th. It opens up here at the A.R. Mitchell Museum on December 1st and will run for six months. This is, in the art world, is a coup that somebody heard about what it is that we were doing down here and reached out and said, hey, we have an exhibit that aligns with what you're doing. What do you think? Done deal. So that'll be one of three exhibits that opens up at the A.R. Mitchell Museum on December 1st as a part of Smithsonian. This is an absolutely amazing exhibit. If you don't know what a corn mother is, it's the holder of story, the holder of culture. It's all women. One of the beautiful things is because we gave them a six-month run, they're actually going to bring their team into Trinidad, and they will be interviewing and doing portraits of corn mothers from our community that will become a part of this exhibit as an artist and a business person. I feel really good about this, and I think we all should. You can go ahead and switch. So pictures worth a thousand words, to the best of my abilities. I think this is, represents a lot of the people who are on board. I know it's not complete, but this is where our graphic designer is going to pull all the logos from, and I want to salute Anissa for her support in this. She's a rock star when it comes to working on projects like this, so I'm glad that we have her. You can go ahead and switch. All of this to be said, you know, there's the saying of killing two birds with one stone. Who wants to kill a bird? We're working off the idea of feeding many birds with one seed. And so while Smithsonian would be sufficient in and of itself, we could be really happy with just doing that. This is, Smithsonian is sort of phase one. If I have my way in 2025, when the Commons is up and running and it's got all its tech, the Colorado Creative Industry. if you can believe that they are on board for opening up their archives and doing an exhibit of their contribution to the community. Fisher's Peak's on board, we're going to do one with the river. We got two new today. So people are really excited about the opportunity that Smithsonian presents. I've been working on this for eight weeks. This is basically what you see as a result of eight weeks of undepicted attention. If you go ahead and switch. One of the things that we're doing is a railroad exhibit. Right now, we have twenty-seven rail organizations in the state of Colorado and any state that touches this, plus Montana and Nevada, who have committed to contributing something to this pop-up rail exhibit. Some of these same people are part of our job fair. And it appears that for the first time, Amtrak is likely going to be part of our job fair, which in my conversations with people, is the first time that's ever happened. You can go ahead and switch. Another exciting part, most of these exhibits are about Trinidad, Los Angeles, where no Colfax counties. And now the word is starting to spread. This is the first exhibit. It has been, it is currently on view at History Colorado. It's been there for a year. It comes down September twenty-ninth. It opens up here at the A.R. Mitchell Museum on December first and will run for six months. This is, in the art world, is a coup that somebody heard about what it is that we were doing down here and reached out and said, hey, we have an exhibit that aligns with what you're doing. What do you think? Done deal. So that'll be one of three exhibits that opens up at the A.R. Mitchell Museum on December first as a part of Smithsonian. This is an absolutely amazing exhibit. If you don't know what a corn mother is, it's the holder of story, the holder of culture. It's all women. One of the beautiful things is because we gave them a six-month run, they're actually going to bring their team into Trinidad and they will be interviewing and doing portraits of corn mothers from our community that will become a part of this exhibit. As an artist and a business person, I feel really good about this. I think we all should. You can go ahead and switch. So pictures worth a thousand words, the best of my abilities. I think this represents a lot of the people who are on board. I know it's not complete, but this is where our graphic designer is going to pull all the logos from. And I want to salute Anissa for her support in this. She's a rock star when it comes to working on projects like this, so I'm glad that we have her. You can go ahead and switch. All of this to be said, you know, there's the saying of killing two birds with one stone. Who wants to kill a bird? We're working off the idea of feeding many birds with one seed. And so while Smithsonian would be sufficient in and of itself, we could be really happy with just doing that. This is, Smithsonian is sort of phase one. If I have my way in 2025, when the Commons is up and running and it's got all its tech, the Colorado Creative Industries has an annual conference. It's four hundred people. I'm already talking with them, I've got their budget, their plans, we know what we need to do. We just need to have a place for four hundred people with the tech. I think we can land this conference. And I think that if we do that, in the next year of work with the Creative District, we'll position this Creative District to not only stand out amongst other creative districts while it's achieving its mission, which is both vague, and I think we can get more specific about how it is that we want to act on that mission. But I think that Trinidad is in a position to create a model that other creative districts would want to copy. And that will be the work that we do between now and when we get the nod that we're going to get this conference. But that's just me being overly optimistic, but I'm pretty sure about it. So that's what I had to offer. Obviously, with thirty-three events, could go on all night, but there are other people. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain that. Fire away.
Ken, just thank you for Good Night Moon. And KCRT is a proud sponsor of the Smithsonian. We've had some great interviews. And, you know, every invention and innovation was someone's attempt to turn a problem into a solution. So to showcase rural America is a welcome addition, and thank you for that.
Absolutely.
No questions, but thank you.
No questions, I was expecting one from you.
Tell me what you want me to ask you.
Yeah, right. Why am I doing this?
Why are you doing this?
Well, I'm doing this, one, because I love a challenge. And my background is in innovation, so when I see what looks like a problem, I just see the underside of that, which is all opportunity. And there are some trends in our community. We have an aging population. The impact of that is being felt. We see it in our nonprofit organizations where the boards are older. If you talk to the folks at the Trinidad Blues Fest, read the paper, and they say, we're in our seventies, nobody younger wanted to step up. And we're seeing this in the community. I talked to so many executive directors and people on boards, and they're all facing a similar challenge. And I think it's a pandemic or it's an endemic, but it seems to be contagious. That there's something going on in our community that is seeing the attrition of some of our most beloved events. And there has not been a collective response to this. So we're initiating a collective response to this. And we're putting together a board retreat. I won't give you the name because it's named after the fans in the Commons. And if you've read the name of the fan, Big A Fan. So we're doing a Big A Board Retreat. A.R. Mitchell's on board. Main Street, so we've got our early adopters. We figure, once we get the power players, the rest of the people will come on board. And we're going to come together and we're going to see what collectively we can do as the pointy tip of the spear in the community to both identify what the challenges are and then collectively come up with a response to that that aligns with some other opportunities that are statewide. So social capital, increased access to resources, that's why I'm doing it.
Gee, I'm glad I asked that.
I knew that you were going to have the first brilliant question.
This was pretty brilliant.
Well, it was. But I know, Mr. DeBono, you've not actually met before.
Questions?
No, on your Smithsonian exhibition, is it? Who picked the exposition for it? Is it just something that's traveling?
Yeah, so the Smithsonian, excuse me, has a division called Museums on Main Street. And that group of people, they build exhibitions that travel the country. This one in particular is called Crossroads: Change in Rural America because they, like everyone else, can see that life in rural America is changing. And over the past eight hundred, not eight hundred years, the past hundred years, probably over the past eight too, but over the past hundred years, there have been some real seismic shifts. And we can see seismic shifts in the last five years. I mean, we could see them in the last two. And so what they're wanting to do is sort of gather the stories from rural communities across the United States, Trinidad being one of those. And the stories that we're collecting will become part of the Smithsonian. I just call it the mothership because I don't know where it'll actually go. But they're going to integrate these stories into Smithsonian proper. And we're learning from other rural communities, what's life like? How have you adapted to the impacts of the changing world? So we've done interviews with people in the community, asking a series of questions. Those will, of course, be available to you on December ninth, when the Smithsonian opens. But we're really just trying to learn, like, how is life different? And in what ways are we resilient and successful at adapting to changes that are completely out of our control? And so I think it's a really interesting way to put a magnifying glass on rural communities and learn, how are they doing it? Because rural does it different. You know, it's duct tape, baling wire, neighbors, relationships, family. I mean, to a T. Every interview that we've done so far ultimately comes to family and neighbors. And if you've ever lived in a big city like I have, I have met more people. It takes me longer to walk a city block in Trinidad because I can't go from A to B without seeing somebody that I know who's like, oh. It takes me longer to get through Trinidad than it would downtown Denver by the block. And I think that that's a real asset. When you're in a large community, like let's just say Denver, things happen around you and you have no idea, like, who one of your neighbors are that just passed. But in a community like ours, when somebody passes or somebody gets married or somebody has a child or anything like that happens, we know and we feel it acutely as a community. That, I think, is an asset that exists in our community, maybe better than it does in others. But certainly, it's a big part of who it is that we are. And we want to showcase that every chance we get during Smithsonian.
Any questions?
All I can say is bravo. I was on Creative District with Corazon City Council, and we were talking about this Smithsonian event. And then COVID happened, and it took time for the space to create, to get together. So I am, oh, I'm so grateful that it's coming together. You're doing a spectacular job bringing this community together through the arts and through conversation about these things. And I, I'm just thrilled. I'm on the advisory council for Colorado Creative Industries, and I have been wanting us to have the convening or any of the conferences to come here with us now. We not only have space to create, we have good hotels, we have the resources to make that come together. So if there's anything I can do to help with that, let me know.
Expect to call. That's a dangerous thing to say.
How does space to create and the Smithsonian come together? Is this, is this, is this there or is this ongoing process?
So Marilyn Losler, who was running the Creative District, is responsible for us having the Smithsonian. She's the one who applied on behalf of the city of Trinidad. I don't know what the criteria was because that was before me.
Right.
I know that the Creative District, you know, had been, had this in their back pocket for about six months and nothing was happening. So Margie, you know, because of the success of Good Night Moon and my utter lack of fear when it comes to knocking on doors and getting people involved, she said, can you, can you produce this thing? And I think, of course. So we've got a small advisory team of four people. And in eight weeks, we've got thirty-three things going on as part of Smithsonian. So our aim is to have the best Smithsonian crossroads exhibit.
Is the first one?
Is ours to be the third in the state.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I, I'm pretty confident that nobody's going to be able to match it. So, yeah, this is, there's nothing thin about it.
So besides what else I say, I want the main takeaway to be, thank you so much for what you've done. It's very obvious, the amount of work you've done. So that's a lot of credit upon you. Thank you. I did want to say, you hear so often, it's a great place, but what are we going to use the building for? So this is really exciting to see. I mean, you are literally putting gas in the engine that is that space. You're bringing it to life, and it's really exciting to see. It's also great how symbiotic it is. I mean, it's caused the corn mothers to come to the A.R. Mitchell. And I mean, you know, activity, and I say this a lot, activity begets activity. And activity is positive for Trinidad.
Absolutely.
So I'm really excited about that. Plus, it works together with, we're looking at the potential of the lodging tax advisory board, using some money to put in, because I'm sure you're aware of that AV equipment. And I mean, it's really starting to be symbiotic and building action. And that action will in turn support small business in Trinidad.
Absolutely.
And that, along with the family connections and the neighbor connections that you speak of, that is the heart and character of our town. So I couldn't be happier. So thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. And I want to also say, just in closing, that, you know, Raton, I don't know, I don't know if people consider Raton a sister city to Trinidad or not, but they are inextricably connected. And that connection is reflected not only in the interviews that we're doing of people who live in Raton. We have artists from Raton that are a part of Smithsonian. And the city of Raton in November is going to issue their own official proclamation, which I will write for them, that they too are in support of the Smithsonian. So we're, I think, one of the things that I think is really cool about Trinidad is that, I won't go into describing why it is that I see it as the thing that I see it as, but it does represent a real opportunity to make real change that not only has an impact that is felt here, but it also has the opportunity to be a model for other communities that are either rural or frontier, that are facing some of the same challenges that we are. But Trinidad can be the positive deviant in that, right? It's like, everybody's facing the same challenges. Why is it that Trinidad is having the success that it is? This is what we do with positive deviants, right? We learn from them, they go, what are they doing that we can replicate? That's what we want to do through the Creative District, is present a solution or really, it's a model to challenges that small rural communities are facing all across the state so that they can look to Trinidad and go, what have they done in order to get where they are? Because in the convention business, which I have been a part of, it's one thing to have hotels and restaurants and, you know, all the infrastructure necessary to receive groups of people. But there has to be, there's got to be more than just beds and buildings. There has to be, I want to go steal what they have. Like, we want them to come and try and steal our stuff. And they'll only get to steal the stuff we've already done because they don't know what's next. But that means that they're going to be replicating the things that we build, which means that Trinidad could become a model for other communities in addressing some of the challenges that we're all facing. So.
Ken, I just want to say, you know, thank you for taking on this project. And, like I said, four people, or four people altogether, they're working on this project. So thank you for taking this on. It sounded like it's pretty massive, but it's very intriguing because it's going to be something that I can see that will help during our winter months, you know, because it's going to end in January or some February sometime. And it allows some additional tourism to come into the community, which is something that we're looking for. I also wanted to, the people are not here tonight, but Marilyn Losler and Margie, those two women have done, Marilyn started way back with the Space Great Project, and she's been a rock star with that, with this project. So she's had a lot of input with what's happened there. Margie's taken it on now. And kudos to them two women for everything. And anybody else who's had a hand in that building. Thank you for bringing this to Trinidad.
Absolutely. Yeah, if it weren't for Marilyn, we wouldn't be here. So we'll thank her once a week. Thank you for, absolutely. Thanks for entertaining my solo week.
I have four petitions or communications or were written. Do we have anybody signed up? In the meantime, I do have a letter from Mr. Robert Arco sent to us on September the fourth of this year. Says, Dear Mayor and City Council, regarding the World Journal article on pages one and twenty-three on the August thirty-first edition of the newspapers. On the afternoon of August eighteenth, I was watering the lawn when I was approached by a person in a straw hat, sandals, who claimed to be running for mayor. He also suggested that the city council had passed a grant, ten million dollars in grant funding. He also stated that, he also stated... Sorry, I didn't hear this. He also, he also started badmouthing Audrey Garrett and Home Rule Charter. While I was on the Home Rule, well, while I was on the Home Rule Charter Commission during the summer of nineteen ninety-three, I sat next to Ms. Garrett. I believe her work for the city of Trinidad during the intervening thirty years has been excellent. Do not request grants you cannot afford to match. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. To the security, Robert Arco.
Yep, that's nice.
Yeah, we have several people signed up tonight. And we'll start with what I usually say, beginning. Okay. Item rules for speaking. Kindly ensure all electronic devices, including cell phones, are either turned off or set to silent mode. Out of respect for all attendees, we request the removal of hats and other head coverings during the meeting unless required for religious or medical reasons. Participants wishing to address the council are required to state their full legal name for the official record. Item four, please note, the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications. However, the council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. Item five, we ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor, refraining from personal attacks and use of foul or abusive language. A civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. Item six, we request all audience members to respect others' rights by not causing noises or disturbances that could potentially disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. With that, let's go ahead and get started with the people that have signed up. I have a, Justin Sampson. Richard Crawford.
That's me. Everybody. Duke is also, Richard Henry Dana Crawford, nine one nine Park Street, recent mover here.
Please be reminded, we have five minutes.
I understand, and I have a timer.
Oh, you do.
Uh, great. And so I had some written notes, but I heard you say there's a budget for audiovisual equipment. That's really why I'm here. Because I really strongly believe that it can solve a lot of problems and we can test it, we can iterate and test. And so basically, Dana Crawford sent me, she's my mom. I've been coming here visiting for many years and helping her vision. And so I'm going to start with a couple of quick questions. How are we going to fill the theater? What's the use going to be? How are we going to get five percent of the I-25 traffic to pull off? Why? And then when I, when I introduced Brett a couple of months, a month ago, I asked, what does Trinidad mean? What's the identity? It used to be, well, recently it's been marijuana. What's the future? So what I would, what I'm imagining is the I-25 traffic driving along and under a laser, shoots from the school, the emerging campus, to the theater. And so it's like the St. Louis Arch. It's like, it's like a brand, it's an experience. It's definitely, it makes your neck turn, and especially when the snow is coming and then the heat going. There's a dramatic feeling and experience entering into it, pointing you to the theater. Why? Because we can host, I mean, in the big picture, not AR equipment, AV equipment that we get now, but in the big picture, we can aim towards inviting and serving the public with an incredible experience in the theater. The, uh, there's some comparables to this, uh, Meow Wolf. Four million dollars a year their first year by providing an incredible experience with parking. And, uh, Beyond in Denver is a number one rated, uh, light show that happens in Denver. Uh, I talked to the guy and, um, it's a struggle for him because of parking. So, uh, uh, the big example, uh, that happened this year is called Sphere. It's in Las Vegas. You should look it up. Uh, and I, I can present it to you, but, um, uh, it's a two billion dollar project. It's the largest computer screen that has ever been made. It's a seamless sphere, half a sphere. It's about, uh, uh, three hundred feet wide. And so you go inside and the whole thing is a screen and the outside is a screen. Something similar and subtle and elegant and beautiful that could play Smithsonian content in a really beautiful way could happen in the theater. And it could break the wall between the inside, outside, can attract people who are zipping by on I twenty-five and earn a reputation as a destination for an incredible light experience. It'd be a thriving business and a thriving offering that can pull people here. So that's kind of the big picture. Um, in, uh, how much time do I have left?
A minute and a half.
Holy shit. Okay. So Monday I'll be in San Francisco, I'm into tech, AI, AR. We can augment reality without forcing people to implant neural link. If they don't like our, our, our displays, where we test them and them, they can turn away. This is really interesting for digital technology. So there's, uh, interesting things there. My goal here is to, uh, uh, present a, a work session, a very, very simple plan to use some of the latest technology, uh, uh, to, uh, test these hypotheses and grow towards, uh, being able to serve Halloween, uh, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Fourth of July, with more en- public entertainment, digital entertainment, and make this theater reach an audience because it can perform digitally as what, in conjunction with the physical performances. So, um, that's really, uh, that's my plan. And so I, I hope that, uh, this week, one last thing, Dana Crawford did, uh, donate a laser, at least for a month. So if you see a laser in town, call me if it's a problem or if you like it. And, and Steve's got my QR code.
Yeah.
And I can go there. Um, but, uh, any questions?
No questions for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, right. Sorry, I forgot to mention that Brett Ferris here came, uh, to Trinidad. He does, uh, like Meow Wolf and you know about that. And so that's the context for this. Okay, thank you.
Bibika.
I'm Bibika Hadison and I want to thank Mayor and council members for allowing us to come before you to speak. And ours is, is really mundane compared to all of this fabulous, wonderful stuff that's happening. We, may I, uh, give each of you one of these? This is a look at downtown Main Street Saturday at twelve thirty-five to twelve forty-five. Yeah. Uh, I would like to ask and not in a, it, this is not, I don't want it to be a battle of, of, of being ugly to one another, but asking for help. As merchants, it was my husband's and my idea when we restored the McCormick. I had refused to lease it to offices of any kind or to service industry. So that there could be destination shopping downtown. Because it, to have at least old fashioned, it, to have downtown viable, you have to have places for people to go. And that is what we try to provide. But we cannot provide it if the streets are arbitrarily closed. And there are two issues with that and I will only address one of them. The other one I think other people are going to address. But in order for us to have business, we do have to be able to have people reach us. And they can't when we close all of Main Street. And in this instance, I do believe it could have been just West Main closed and not commercial and not East Main as well. And still have a celebration for those who wanted to celebrate. If we continue this process of closing off these streets during our prime retail days, I, I, I don't know what the answer is. I had told my tenants and my friends, this is give back to the community. But as merchants, I don't know how much more give back we can do and still survive. And so I would like to ask that maybe we could be given a little more consideration when street closures occur. That how much do we really need in order to make this fabulous event happen? And how much can we see to it that we still have the ability to have customers come and shop? And with that, I'm going to say thank you and, uh, let someone else speak.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Is it Joe? Zoe. Zoe?
Yes.
Zoe.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Uh, my name is Zoe Angel and I have a plant shop at one thirteen North Commercial. Uh, along the same lines as, uh, Bibika. Um, the Saturday's festivities were fantastic and well attended. Um, however, the, um, notification of these, this event and past events has been, um, poor. Uh, so the week before Sep- the September sixteenth, uh, celebration flyers were left in the door um, of many of the businesses. Um, I had looked up the event prior to see if there were in fact any street closures taking place. Um, the event details were listed as downtown Trinidad on the flyer that they handed out. Um, and on Facebook, it was listed as one thirty-five piece main, which is what houses the co-op, um, the cafe and the office buildings above the co-op. Um, so I looked up the event on the city of Trinidad Facebook page. Um, and there was apparently a street closure or a, a notice posted that, um, the street closures would be, um, for the homecoming parade as well as for the, uh, Dia Siseste de Septiembre. Um, and that it stated that the event organizers would post no parking signs at these locations. Um, signs were posted for the homecoming parade. No such signs were posted for the event, which closed Main Street from Maple to Animus and Commercial Street from Main to Church. My business is on, uh, North Commercial there between Main and Church. Um, I'm all for pedestrian culture. I think it's something that is, it benefits us greatly. However, how can we do this efficiently? Does that mean that, um, the city is somehow advising the event organizers as to how much space they actually need? Uh, on Saturday, it was pretty empty from, uh, Maple to Commercial. When the car show came, there were several cars parked on the other side of Commercial, on the east side of Commercial. Um, and then Commercial itself had about four or five booths there. Um, two of which set up directly in front of my shop. Um, it impacts our businesses on East Main and Commercial by not allowing parking for our customers and clients, many who are elderly or from out of town. Um, this is also a major thoroughfare. My thought would be to close, um, Main's beginning at Commercial and going west in this particular in- instance. Uh, the parking lots were impacted by people who were setting up the events, um, as well as on-street parking going down Commercial. Um, yeah, the miners memorial parking lot was closed Friday morning, not Friday evening, as, uh, in the street closure list on Facebook by the city. Why are businesses not being included in notifications by event organizers? How can events and businesses work together to elevate downtown Trinidad?
One minute left. I'm sorry for interrupting. One minute left.
Oh, thank you.
You're sure.
Um, there were four or five vendors on Commercial, um, was it necessary to close East Main? Can the city assist the event organizers with their planning? Uh, I believe the city has most businesses' email addresses. Is it possible to email the businesses directly with planned street closures in advance of the event? Uh, and lastly, the cleanup after an event parade leaves something to be desired. There's always trash, candy, gross spills on the sidewalks and benches. Um, and still little tiny American plastic flags all over, uh, the sidewalks. How do we work together to make not only events, but also businesses successful on these days? That is my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia?
Yes, sir. Can I get back here? How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Good. Fantastic. What I hear. Um, I probably sound a tiny bit redundant, but I'm gonna try to shy away from all of that. Thank you. Um, as you know, I have a thing about five Saturday months. And this is one of them. And in this five Saturday month in business, uh, which is an important month to anyone in business, five Saturdays, that Christmas gift. Three of them have been taken away from us through street closures and events. Some of what we knew about, some of what we didn't, you know, and I'm really flexible. Go ahead, go ahead and do it, you know, whatever, as long as it's not impacting my business. I'll even support it. I'll go out there, buy whatever bake sell stuff is going on and I want it to be a success, whatever's done. I want to be a success too and I want my fellow merchants to be a success. I don't want to see empty shops. I want them to have every Saturday they can put in their, into their bank account going into the winter season. And, um, you know, that we're thriving, um, as merchants. Unfortunately, these, um, street closures aren't helping at all, especially when we have the farmer's market going on and those street closures are going on down there. And then you have people getting off on, off the interstate to see and visit our sweet little town that looks so great from the interstate. And they hit this place and they can't go forward and they go down there and they can't go through there. And then they go over here and they can't get through here. And then they, they find a parking lot and it's almost completely full. And so then they find a parking spot and then they start to walk. And it's like, well, okay, uh, what's going on? Okay, where, how are we gonna get down here? Uh, you know, I'm on a cane, I'm in a wheelchair, you know, I, I'm challenged, I'm elderly. We get a lot of elderly tourism here. And the pedestrian streets are great ju- for just walking around when there's not a lot of other things going on that are distracting or in the way. So we are asking for the events to, to be a little better planned. I, I used to be in advertising. If I did not create a one-year plan for my companies of what they were going to do in their advertising for the next twelve months, things that they could change if they wanted to, I didn't have business. They wanted me to, to plan for them, what are we going to do in our events, in, in our business? And that helped me a lot to be successful in that realm. I don't know why we can't be presented with what's gonna happen this year in your neighborhood where you're doing business. Is there not a, a way that we can say, let's put this somewhere else? Let's do events that don't seem desperate and knee jerk. Let's do events that are well thought through and planned out. You know, yeah, we can have a sidewalk sale on the thirtieth with the bike race and whatever else might be out there that we don't know about coming up. But why can't we do something that is really unique? I know, I do, I've been doing sidewalk sales all summer, and, you know, not every weekend, but oh, nearly every weekend. It does help. It does put bright signs up and people are attracted to it. And I'm hoping that it helps all my neighbors around them. I talk to them, get involved in this, we're doing this, you know, let's do this. But a sidewalk sale as an event, I guess I'm not really on board with that. I would be more inclined to go for and help to promote and be glad to embrace my, my, my corner being closed down or the coal miners park for something like a coal dust festival. We're talking about the history here of this town. What built this town? Coal mining did. I have a huge respect for that. I think everybody does what comes into our, our town. And so we start talking about, well, what, what built this town? What is the history here? It's so unique, it's so different. Well, coal miners did this. Let's have a coal dust festival. Let's do it Friday, Saturday and Sunday, or Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And have it running, where, where we have vendors and artists and, you know, maybe a little alcohol beverages over here and a, a band or two out here, play some old timey cowboy music, a cowboy poet. You know, let's do things like that. Maybe have a policeman on horseback riding around and saying, let's do something different here. Let's make it an event that when people see it on the internet, they say, oh, let's go there, that's different.
One minute, Ken. I'm sorry.
Okay, I've got one more minute. I have nothing more to say except that what, no, everybody else has already said. Except that we just would like a little more consideration and if we, do we have to close middle, the heart of our downtown down all the time? You know, weekend after weekend after weekend. These merchants, many of them in their first year, second year, third year, they're struggling. They, they're trying to get their lease payments and their rent payments up and have a living and pay their mortgage. You know, take care of their kids. So come on, we need some help here. You know, we want some real good planning. If anybody has any questions about anything I can do to help, just let me know. You know, I've got a couple of ideas here and there. So thank you for your time. Have a lovely evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jessica McCorpo?
So I own Cedar's Kitchen and I'm in the McCormick building. I'm just gonna add to what they've already said. Uh, when I came in on Saturday morning, I had no idea the roads were gonna be closed. Um, I looked, tried to find information about what was going on. I couldn't find anything anywhere. Um, there was no notice given to me at all. Um, so when I, I, like Bibika showed the picture and that's exactly, you know, what was going on outside our door for most of the day. Once they parked those few cars, there still wasn't very much activity. Um, the people who did come in were all confused. They had no idea what was going on, whether they were passing through or locals. One local customer asked me, she's, was she said, um, I've just been walking around this event, just trying to figure out what the theme is. And I just didn't have much of an answer to give her. I'm not sure. So yeah, I just like what they said is, you know, we need to be notified when the road is gonna be closed. We can plan, you know, accordingly. And, and just getting the word out there. I think communication throughout our entire community is what is gonna be the key to success. Because if even our locals don't know what events are going on, then how, you know, they're not gonna come out and participate. So communication is key through the whole community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really thank you. Just a rubber, sound like we can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do some work on this. Item B, item five, our consent agenda approval. Five A, approval of a special meeting minutes of September 1, 2023. Regular meeting minutes of September 5, 2023. Item B, approval of special event. Malt, vinous, and spirituals application filed by the Trinidad Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce at 219 West Main Street on 9/30/2023. Do we have a representative here?
Mary C. Gino, for the chamber.
Thank you. Item C, approval of the art gallery permit application filed by the Art Cottage LLC doing business as the Art Cottage at 210 North Commercial. Do we have a representative here?
Darcy Metzett.
Thank you. Item D, approval of the art gallery permit application filed by the AR Mitchell Memorial Incorporated at 150 East Main Street. Do we have a representative here? No? Item E, approval of the special event permit, malt, vinous, and spirituals application filed by AR Mitchell Memorial Incorporated, 150 Main Street on 10/13, 10/21, 10/28, and 12/9, and 12/16, 2023. We don't have a representative here either, correct?
No.
Okay. Item F, approval of resolution authorizing the renewal of health insurance benefits for the city, employees, and the dependents through CEBT. Health care for how planned year January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. That usually falls on Ms. Garrett. She's here. Item G. Item G, new retail cultivation facility. Two retail marijuana product manufacturing facility. Three medical marijuana infused products manufactured. And four medical marijuana optional premises cultivation operation and license applications filed by K&amp;P Enterprise LLC doing business as Atomic Fun Streets at 3601 Freedom Road, set for a public hearing at 6:00 PM on November 28, 2023. Do we have a representative here? None?
Yes, we do, council members via Zoom, thank you.
Don't they typically require to be here?
No. Zoom is from the show.
Item H, new retail marijuana store license application filed by K&amp;P Enterprise LLC doing business as Blazing Hippie at 123 West Cedar Street, and set for a public hearing at 6:00 PM on November 8, 2023. Approval of the bills in the amount of $3,546,506.53. Item J, approval of payroll September 16, 2023 to September the 29th, 2023, in the amount of $440,146.145. I'll entertain a motion, and D is taking into consideration those two items, which was item D and E, where we had no representative. What do you want to do?
What, have we decided not to pass it unless they appear?
I think that's right. I think that's the stated policy of council. You need to be here for the vote.
I'll make a motion and we will all of it accept the two.
Mr. Mitchell, I'm on the board, I don't know if I can serve as a representative.
Yes, you can.
Safe by the job.
On the bell, the president of the college is the case. That's right.
I'll make a motion and we pass the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All roll, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Old Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item Six, public hearing, 6/8. New for men, the malt beverage and wine license application filed by CF Altitude LLC doing business as Alpha 6338 at 806 East Goddard Avenue. Hearing is now open. Do we have a representative here? Please come forward, and would you please swear them in?
If you don't raise your hand, do you swear in a testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Downs? Thank you, Mayor, council members. I believe we have here Mr. Richard Spresser, who is the president of the corporate applicant LLC, and Ms. Renee Madrid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you both. And Mr. Spresser, I talked to you both today, so I think that Ms. Madrid insisted you answer all the questions.
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay. But, sir, I wanted just to ask you a couple of questions to begin, if I could, please.
Sure.
And that is, you are the president of CF Altitude LLC, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and your proposal this evening is for a fermented malt beverage and wine license application at 806 East Goddard Avenue in Trinidad, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, I know, having spoken to you, that you were wanting to make some introductory comments to council.
Sure.
And I would invite you to go ahead and do that now, please.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for listening to our petition this evening. First of all, a little bit about us. We are a Colorado corporation, or located in Colorado, Greenwood Village 8400, East Prentice Avenue in Greenwood Village, Colorado. We currently operate 161 stores in seven states, and we have about 129, 130 beer, wine, liquor licenses that we manage when we're doing this. We currently employ somewhere between 12 and 1300 employees. About 800 of those are in Colorado. Colorado is where we're primarily located, although we are in the other six states that we operate in. One of the things that we do when we're hiring new people is we offer several programs for them. And one of them is a national program called Training in Alcohol Management. And so, every employee's hired, it's really more of a virtual, written, reading test, I guess you would say, that they all have to take and sign off on. The other follow-up that we have is we subscribe to a national program called bars. And what bars is, is, I'll call them secret shoppers that come into our locations and buy regulated items, so the alcohol, tobacco. They have become a popular item. And so, they come in, they shop. If they're asked for their ID, they receive a green card, which gets them a reward from us. If they don't ask, they get a red card, which then they receive some counseling. So, we do have that program. And I will say this. We also have a zero tolerance policy within our company. And there's not, one strike, two strike, three strikes, you get one strike. And if you sell to a miner, if you sell in a sting, whatever the case may be, you automatically lose your job right then and there. And unfortunately, we've had some long-term employees who made a mistake, and you hate to see that. But there's no, there's no leeway in that policy. There's no second chances. And so, we take our responsibility very seriously and try to do the right thing every day. We're in a highly regulated business, whether it's with alcohol, tobacco, selling fuel. It's what we do, and I can't say it's enjoyable every day, but I would try to do the best I can.
Now, can you, a few more questions, please, Mr. Spresser. So, I want to ask you, so, did you, have you reviewed the application submitted for this liquor license?
I have.
Okay, thank you. And you swear it was accurate and it's for us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, so, because you have so many licenses in the state of Colorado, is it not correct that you're a part of the state's master filing system? That is, the background checks for you and your partners, not partners, maybe a little bit of a jive with you. You have kind of a, you have part of the master file for the background checks, is that correct?
We've been, had background checks and been fingerprinted.
For a number of other licenses?
For other licenses.
Okay, and that master file is used as a, for other liquor license applications? By the same, you passed and you continue to pass the background checks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, sir, I just know that on the materials you submitted, you have listed as other principals in the LLC, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but you have Marty McGilvray, correct?
Correct.
Who I believe is your CFO?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Gregory Shoemaker?
Yes.
And Mr. Shoemaker, I believe, is like a regional manager, is that correct?
He's more of a general partner for the LLC.
Okay, but those are the individuals who are basically managers or principals on the LLC?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, so we're clear, from the submittals, we know that CF Altitude LLC is a Delaware corporation authorized to do business in the state of Colorado, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just a few more questions, sir. You have provided in your materials here all the liquor licenses or the fermented malt beverage and wine licenses that you hold in the state of Colorado, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, to your lease, you lease the premises at 806 East Goddard from FNLI Altitude Propco LLC, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, as you and I were talking today, is that a sister LLC to CF Altitude LLC?
Yes, it is. So, our structure, operational structure, if you will, is, I don't know if you'd even call it sister as another arm to our business, but we have a Propco arm. So, all the properties are dropped into Propco, and then there's an operating company, which is what we are, is the operating company. So, we are related as businesses and owned by the same entities. But it's just the way we're structured.
Thank you. And, sir, to the petition, I believe your company hired Alcohol Petition Services to do the petition circulating, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. And is someone on Zoom from, it's not required?
I'm not sure, I don't think so.
Yes, they're in, Brian Turner, Alcohol Petition Services.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were there, sir, thank you. So, the petitions that were circulated from Alcohol Petition Services, have you had a chance to look at that?
I have.
Okay. And I believe there were 90 signatures that were obtained, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and 72 were in favor, and 18 were in opposition, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Mayor and council members, I should direct your attention to some supplemental materials, I believe that were in your seating places, this evening, I'm sure you have those. And so, the 72 valid signatures in favor, those are an indication that the needs of the community are not being met by existing establishments? Is that correct?
It's correct, we refer to it as a needs and desires survey.
Which is the lead, okay, the legal standard. And you submit that in support of your application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But of course, the community or the neighborhood being defined is the city of Trinidad for this. So, sir, I just want to ask you a few more things. With all your liquor licenses, the licenses you currently possess, you have a knowledge of the liquor code for the state of Colorado, correct?
Correct.
And for the city of Trinidad for the three existing licenses?
Right.
You understand that if there are any violations by any of your employees, that it's impudent to you, right? If this license is approved, you as the principal in the LLC, if there's a violation, they're coming after your license.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make that abundantly clear. And you have spoken about what you do to ensure that there's lawful complaints by your employees, and the training your employees will get. I just want to ask you, I think, one last question, and that is, you understand, sir, that if you were approved for this license, that you agree to continuously cooperate with officials from the city of Trinidad, right? Fire officials, police officials, city clerk, manager, attorney. You agree to continue to cooperate with us in the conduct of this liquor license establishment?
Of course we do, and again, as I briefly mentioned, we take this very seriously. And yes, we do have a lot of licenses in the state 70-something, the state of Colorado. And we take it very seriously, but not, you know, you mentioned it specific to the alcohol license. You know, we want to be a good partner, a good business person for the city of Trinidad. We've actually had a store here for quite some time before we purchased the Duran stores. But we operate in quite a few, what I've heard you being referred to as a rural community. To me, you're not. We operate in a lot of rural communities, so watch Colorado as rural. So, we take our responsibility to be a part of your community very seriously. Not just on, you know, related to a beer license, but in all other aspects.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have no further questions, Mayor and Council. Questions for Council?
I just want to just make it clear with record that the supplemental that we got is passing of some failed inspections by the fire department.
Right, exactly. The approval was obtained, those were issues in the initial packet, those had interest, I should have said that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions, just thank you for bringing your business, I appreciate it.
Same.
Appreciate your business, thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate you being there as well. I did want to ask, with respect to Mr. Downs, with respect to the guideline that we follow for liquor licenses, what merit does the, what was it, 18 dissenting people, what merit does that have?
Well, I will say, it certainly has merit. I don't know the reason, the reasons why they were in opposition to this license application. And I thought that would give pause to council, because it's a high number. And I think it's the highest number we have seen. And I don't know why that was there. I don't know if anyone else would like to speak to that.
I would, I would, just, it's an observation. Typically, it's statistically negligible.
Right.
But this is appreciable, and because it is, I just think it warrants some further discussion.
Sure.
And I guess I would answer that. If you noticed on the Needs and Desires report, that they are given a chance to give a response as to why they are opposed. And all 18 had no response as to why they were opposed.
Right.
And just quite frankly, some people are just opposed. I mean, it's gonna be the day that they don't want to see anybody else selling a bear or anything else. There's no real reason behind it, other than we're just gonna be doing more.
And if I could, please, I think I would be determined in my duties if I could say, if there really was organized, not organized, but if there was opposition, that had, you know, meritorious, you know, reasons for the opposition, they would come here to the hearing, right? And speak in opposition and say why.
I would like to.
I would like to mention, I mean, they were given notice as to when that hearing was.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Did the person circulating the petition have any input or?
Hi, Brian Turner. I can surely add a little input. They were provided the form, we didn't read off or allowed them to read that the hearing date was today. As well as on the nose, they were provided the opportunity to write in whatever the response was, if they so chose to. And I believe the only person that actually took the time to write something in was somebody that was in favor of the license.
You know, the only reason I can speculate on this is I think that a lot of times people look at saturation of liquor licensing in the community our size. That would be one. The other one is that taken away from the individual, small liquor establishments is the other. So those would be the two reasons why there's probably any opposition, even though they might not say it. But that would probably be the two reasons that I would probably come up with. Because I've heard that before, not on this particular case, but I've heard that before. But those are the two reasons why it would be implied, people would be in opposition.
And if you look at the petitions, the signatures themselves, I looked at addresses and names, even though it's considered the neighborhood, there were signatures from the eight hundred block of Colorado, I haven't.
Yeah.
And there is a mom and pop liquor store in that area that maybe had patrons that wanted to be loyal.
So I have one more question if I can name there. Less, as far as meeting the legal standard, then this obviously still meets the legal standard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there questions? Is there anyone speaking in the audience or online that speak for or against the application by CF Altitude? Hearing none, opinion is not opposed. I'll entertain a motion for new fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license, license application filed by CF Altitude LLC doing business as Alta 6338 at 806 East Goddard Avenue, entertain a motion.
Sound moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of them?
Debono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Findings, any findings?
In the matter of CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta 6338, 806 East Goddard Avenue, Trinidad, Colorado, 81082, new permitted malt beverage and wine. This matter came for a hearing on the, I have asthma today, so I'm trying to, I'll get through this, on the application of CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta number 6338 at 806 East Goddard Avenue in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new fermented malt beverage and wine license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, in City Council chambers and City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence at the test, excuse me, at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Richard Spresser and Renee Madrid testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of the license. The city clerk's report showed that there are forty-five liquor license outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are six fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premise license, one club license, fifteen hotel or restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, ten tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted a petition containing two petition sections regarding the liquor license application. The petitions contain ninety total ballot signatures, of which sixty-six are residents of, or are residents or business representatives from within the neighborhood, twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. Eighteen individuals signed in opposition to its issuance, no remunstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as a local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta number 6338 at 806 East Goddard Avenue in Trinidad, Colorado. In Trinidad, Colorado, I guess that's it.
Congratulations, and thank you for asking, thank you for asking all the questions.
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job, Ms. Ridgeway.
Thank you.
I know, I know.
Okay, on to item seven, unfinished business, we have none. I admit this language business, a day resolution of the City Council, the city of Trinidad, opting in to Proposition 123, establishing an affordable housing baseline for access to the newly created state Affordable Housing Fund. Entertain a motion?
Sound moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Yeerman?
So as I previously was discussing, Proposition 123 created the state Affordable Housing Fund this year, because it was kind of a halfway point. This year is an additional hundred, or hundred and sixty million, and next year, which I think will be more consistent for year after year, is three hundred and eighteen million into that fund. That represents quite an increase versus the state's affordable housing efforts. Again, previously, the, a lot of the grants that we worked on were done through special appropriations through the legislature. So Prop 123 created an actual fund for that. To access that funding, all local governments are required to opt in. And by opting in, you're opting in through a three-year period and setting a baseline. What that baseline means is that you are working towards the increase of three percent a year of your affordable housing. And for the city of Trinidad, that's thirty-nine units a year, or a hundred and seventeen units over the next three years. Question that always comes up is what is the penalty for not achieving the baseline? And I've asked that numerous times, and the penalty would be that your community is ineligible for funding for a one-year period in twenty twenty-seven. So what I have advised a lot of my rural communities, which you are classified under the state classification, is that by not achieving the goal, you would only lose one year of funding versus, out of four, versus not being able to get any by not opting in. However, that said, as I discussed with the Housing Now program, you guys are well on your way to achieving that one hundred and seventeen year goal through your efforts for Housing Now. The last piece of the puzzle is that if you do opt into Prop 123, you're required to have fast-track review in your ordinance or zoning words. We did achieve that through the code rewrite that I, because it was expedited review is actually a qualified strategy that was supported by the IHOP program, and then granted, I was just funded for it. So you've already checked that box, and in this, you'll see in that resolution, it does cite ordinance, my computer just shuts down right then, three thousand seventy-seven, as setting that expedited review in your code. So you've also already achieved that requirement, so you should be all set. If you opt in tonight, the actual process of doing this takes about ten minutes. There is a, just to kind of wrap this up real quick, there is a way to manipulate your baseline data. I've spent a bunch of time looking at, well, is that, no, 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 actually.
Can we work on that more?
No, actually, that's actually what the state allows, but is you're actually able to, believe it or not, you could use a neighboring county's AMI, you can set interest rates, you can also set different absorptions. It really only changes your totals by one or two units. So yes, you can literally look at it, and you, you have to make the justification, because the state actually has a tool. I'm, after sitting through Prop 123, the state actually did a, did a sheet for every municipality, and I was like, oh, I wish they would have went with that. So I wouldn't have spent three hours online trying to manipulate your numbers by trying to figure it out. So I guess my point to that is saying that the state recommended baseline is what we're using for your filing for Prop 123.
Questions? Michael, why were the funds split sixty-forty between the Office of Economic Development and DOL?
So that's a great question. The Office of Economic Development is actually, their funds are being administered by CHAFAM, and a majority of those funds are going back into the low-income housing tax credit program. I think by the creation of the legislation, or the adopting legislation for the ballot, they are dividing the funds in ways that supplement different programs. A lot of those programs were already traditional programs from the state. So they, you know, now, what they're basically doing is they're looking at how Prop 123 is now going to be the funding for those traditional programs that were, were done to the, to the state previously.
Last November, the voters approved it, do you remember how, was it a?
I think it was, I think it was about, I'm going to probably misquote this, but I think it was sixty-forty. If I had to, if I had to.
In favor?
So speaking of manipulating, so.
That word, right?
I love that word. So the, the apartments and homes that we have funded through are affordable housing does not qualify for the, for this, that we have attained X amount of houses.
So the way, so there's, it's yes and no. So yes, any new building permit that's pulled after today's meeting counts. Unfortunately, the ones that have been completed will not count towards that baseline. The second piece, so this is the plane being built as it flies. I have very heavily lobbied, as you know, I also represent the six eastern counties, just east of you, that are very rural. And the state has a, in its, what units count versus what don't, it says that they must be de-restricted. You, the city, on the program we're doing, as you remember, my numbers, seventy-nine were de-restricted, a hundred and forty were of the hundred and forty. So there's that gap that the units that are not de-restricted. I've had different responses from different state offices on whether or not a de-restriction will be required, or whether it's the price point. And I don't want to like sound like I'm like a know-it-all expert or something, but I've been really, really pushing hard at the state level, because the way of an evaluation of a unit is actually, or when it is determined, is that's when you pull a building permit. So your fee for your, if you're building a new home, is based on the valuation of your home, and it's also what you're going to be assessed at the, at the time of the tax assessment, correct? And so I've been pushing very hard, because a lot of my markets are inverted, where the cost of housing and putting in de-restriction would be prohibitive to financing a new home. And that hits really hard with me and my eastern plain communities, because I will literally never achieve the baseline in any of those communities if a de-restriction is required, because I can't finance them. And so there's a lot, I guess I would say is, from, for me personally, I take that one to heart for my local communities, and I'm pushing very hard on how that baseline is determined. So if it is indeed the latter, where it is based on building permit evaluation, I think these baselines would actually be very, much more attainable. And I think I would just ask that if you ever get questioned or you're ever attending something on Prop 123 with state officials, that you echo that concern about the fact that you are in a rural community, further classification, and that, you know, not just for the city of Trinidad, but also for your communities that are basically around you, achieving those baselines really should be based on the evaluation of the unit when it is being constructed versus an actual de-restriction. And it's, it's a sensitive subject, because I worked in a resort community and where funding is being applied. And I had, it took me, it took me, it took a hard look at some, and reading needs assessments, and really looking at the data, before I could come to the realization that de-restrictions weren't going to work on the product I was building in eastern plains. And at the end of the day, again, it just comes down to like this basic rule, we, we should be achieving, the end goal is putting people in safe, secure housing, and then supporting our workforce. And I hope the state recognizes that in rural locations, we have an inverted market, that the end goal is what we're trying to achieve, not trying to punish the ninety-nine percent for the one percent that might have like this. So that's my little diatribe on that.
Okay, thank you. One more question.
Sure.
So you recall the gentleman that came before us a couple of weeks ago, and he's developing City View Heights. So is that, that structure of what he's doing out there, would that qualify under Prop 123?
Absolutely.
Even if they're not, they don't own any land?
No, yeah, well, yes. And the way Prop 123 is worded is that there's two price points. It's sixty percent AMI or less for rentals, and it's a hundred percent AMI or less for homeownership. His project is between seventy and eighty percent AMI, so that's definitely qualifiable.
So that's good news, because there's quite a few open lots that could qualify.
That would be twenty. And also the townhome project, which was twelve, so right there you get thirty-two units.
So we're, we're there, aren't we?
For the year, yes, for your one.
Thank you. What, what, how do we go by year by year? When does this actually start?
So it starts the day you opt in, so any units created after today that filed building permits qualify. And then it goes through twenty twenty-six is when you'll report your baseline. I will even say, I have, again, I'm like the squeaky wheel on every time I get on my Zoom call. I'm like, well, how do we report our baseline? Should our, should I be advising my clients that the building department should be taking this on? Or should it be done at the county accessory level? And so they're still working on the details of that, is what I get. I'm good there with you, I don't think.
I, I mean, they've got to find out what exactly.
Yeah.
And then on this, like she mentioned those houses out there on Trinidad, they have to apply for this, or do they come through us, or how does that work?
That's a great question. So when you file, when the, when we file the baseline online, you are able to put in additional partners that can file for, on behalf of the city. So for instance, the elevation land trust, the Trinidad Housing Authority is a good example. And those, you don't, that's not set in stone, but an applicant can come in. The bottom line is, is that an applicant that wants to build affordable housing in the city of Trinidad is not eligible unless the city opposite for that Prop 123.
Yeah, that's what I was, they'd have to come through us instead of that. Okay, thank you.
The defining that baseline requirement, is that something that would be helpful to get our lobbyist involved on?
You know, I, I don't, I, I think it's, I think the big piece of the puzzle on that is, is if you have an opportunity to talk to your state senator or your state rep, those are the folks that have control of legislation that created the fund. And I mean, this is a fact for rural Colorado. It's just, it's a, it's a unique situation that, that where the affordable housing crisis is centered around is Denver and the resort communities, right? That's who gets the most of the focus. Whereas rural communities, I can tell you, also face the same dilemmas. I have a billion-dollar solar array going just north of Yuray that's bringing in three hundred and fifty construction workers to build renewable energy for the state, and yet I'm dealing with an inverted market. So it, it's not like rural Colorado doesn't need housing. It's just that the, the way the programs are structured are based on valuations from resort communities. And I understand that, I mean, the crest of your, that normal house sells for one point two million, and they're selling houses on the affordable housing for two fifty to three hundred. And they're selling houses on the affordable housing for two fifty to three hundred. So protecting that investment is very important. But in an inverted market, it's not about the price. It's about, there's, it costs more to put the labor and the sticks that go into the house costs more than what people can afford out here. That's what the price is here. So it's an inverse, is what I mean by inverted market. And that's the story that's not being told because rural Colorado is just not, as the Denver metro area and the resort communities.
Well, maybe, maybe you could write something up for us that we could send a letter to them? Because I, I mean, I don't think that I could call Ty Winter and discuss this.
Sure, sure.
I think I might get to the point like, there's something going on with. It would be helpful to have some kind of an explanation of what our perspective is and why it would help Trinidad.
I hate to put the pressure on him, but we'll be seeing Ty Winter tomorrow, maybe, and you can get.
Well, yes, it's eight o'clock now. So probably not, but I guess what I would suggest, I think the simple message is that, and I'm two years state rep. I think the simple message is that flexibility in problem one, two, three for rural communities is needed. And I think that's where I would leave it at this point. Again, the nice thing is they're still in the process of setting these regulations. But the, for instance, Trinidad's on the cusp of de-restrictions, like you're, you're seeing your property values kind of going higher. But everything east of here, that's not the case. You know, and, and I think it's, I think it's, what I'm asking is that because you guys are kind of the big rural community in the group, that you have a lot of weight in making those statements about saying, hey, we need to be thinking about rural Colorado when you make decisions. And I do see the, I will say that the listening sessions, the state has done a really good job of condemning this. And so my hope is, because I was just at Rural Land Trust Day Days on Thursday speaking about this. And in the state, all of, every, every one of the organizations that is receiving this funding is there. And so we had those discussions, but it's just continuing that forward.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
Question, just curious, how far off were we during the manipulation process?
Sure.
For getting things approved?
So when you, there's, there's three things that you can manipulate, sorry. I know. On your, when setting your baseline, market absorption, interest rates, and vacancy. And when you, when you do, when you, when you use the tool that DOLA supplies, it was changing the unit counts by two or three units based on what they were. So, you know, even setting a really high interest rate or a really high vacancy rate, that wasn't really having a substantial change.
So we were on the button, haven't been.
Yeah.
Michael, thank you for being so knowledgeable and dedicated to this process. We really appreciate that. It's my observation, and it may not be as helpful as I think it is, or maybe past the point of being timely, but you do keep saying the airplane is still being built. I think it would be a good idea if council either authorized the mayor to sign a letter or we all sign a letter in general that was delivered to the appropriate people, in my mind, that would be helpful. And I do think that it's something that, to Councilman Ogletree's point, I think it'd be good for the lobbyist to take up that effort as well. I mean, you know, more angles of attack are always, always good. I have a question so much as an observation and maybe over simplifying this for myself. But in my opinion, by opting in, we're allowing future homes to access funds that they would not have otherwise, right? And then we let market forces and any projects that happen try and meet that year-on-year increase to remain viable for it. So, I mean, that's just it, we're saying yes to free money and hoping we can maintain the next year, so.
That's correct. And in your opt-in, they ask you, the question, one paragraph you actually have to enter is how do you plan on achieving your baseline? And of all the communities I've been assisting with, I think you guys have the best answer because you created a two-million-dollar fund through your Housing Now program to directly incentivize developers to build affordable housing, which is a very strong fight. I'm ready to hit send on that explanation for you. It is a very strong signal. And to your point, I actually really think the lobbyist angle on this is actually a very, I love that idea, I love that idea.
Let's work on that idea there, Mr. Buber.
Yes.
Okay. Also, you were saying that, if I can get this right, is that the baseline that they're using is from other areas and not rural areas? Is rural areas that?
No, so real quick on that one. You can choose to use Los Angeles County AMI or you can choose to use a neighboring one or the state. And so, again, on the AMIs, that really gets, it really sorts of, the statewide AMI would be, again, if I was still the community development director of Cresta View with my previous job, I'd probably be going more towards the statewide because it would give me better numbers and better housing prices to build to. Again, manipulating the data. But I, I, like I said, like, well, I couldn't believe they actually allowed you to do that. And then I was like, oh, wow, they actually provided the right numbers.
It's like Michael Yurman's tutorial. Just kidding.
No, they actually, they had a whole Zoom on it, which is.
One last, one last comment, this is for council. And a few weeks back, I was in Denver and I talked to Rick, our CFO of DOLA, the Director of Land. And he was pretty insistent on us opting into this one twenty-three because he recognizes how this could help us. So I'm glad that, you know, of course, we're a month away, basically, nothing happened away from meeting that deadline. So it's good that, you know, we're meeting tonight, so. I'll do this for you, so. Any other questions?
I just have a statement. It's an FY. I got an email from a real estate agent today. And it was an analysis of the real estate market in Trinidad. And it says, basically, she's saying that it's going from a seller's market to a buyer's market. There's a big shift in the housing market in Trinidad.
I think that's all over the.
It is, it is. But I, I watch Realtor, I look at Realtor.com all the time. And I can see that our inventory of houses are good.
Well, we do have a first and a second on that, if there's a discussion, all votes please.
Debona?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Fermin?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Adam A. B., consideration of Housing Now incentive agreement between the city and Kit Hamden. L. L. P. for two oh one and two thirty seven State Street, entertain the motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Yurman, last gentleman.
So this, this one is actually just, I would consider administrative edit to the agreement they already have executed. Again, they, the previous agreements cited the transformational housing grant. Since we have submitted the stronger communities grant, it's in there, you can, basically, we're just deleting one and setting the other. However, the one thing I will say is that we, on this agreement, set a two, a strong two-year pool building permit deadline for the funding for this application. So starting today, if approved, the two-year quantum block will start ticking.
Do we have anybody here from?
And I have.
Kit Hamden?
I, I, they actually, when I talked to them, they actually stated that they weren't gonna be able to attend tonight. But because the grant was submitted and DOLA needs that documentation, I told them that we should push forward with this because I didn't want us to get into applying with the state.
Questions?
Of course, of course. I have no question.
The, the amount of the money that they've received is enough for the match that's requested?
So there, that was a great question. The agreement actually explicitly states that they are responsible for the additional match. So they asked for four million, the total match would be eight hundred, so they're responsible for the additional fees.
That was from the previous?
That's for this, this ask.
Right.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Call the vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Fermin?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Adam A. C., consideration of Housing Now incentive agreement between the city and Trinidad State College for five oh three and five oh seven State Street and ten twenty-four First Street, entertain the motion.
Second?
Second.
And discussion, Mr. Yurman, and I think they're looking for seventy-five thousand, is that right?
That's correct. However, fifty thousand was already approved for a different applicant for five oh three and five oh seven State Street. So really, it's actually, as far as the amount is concerned, it's only an allocation of twenty-five thousand additional for ten twenty-four First Street. And talking with the college, this will get them through the next two years of their Cooper program. And then one kind of, I don't wanna say it's fun fact, but at the Rural Land Trust Day Days, I actually teach them the expert new tricks or whatever. The funding that is actually funding that program is an award for them from the Attorney General's office. And it was actually really cool to be there and to listen about the program myself, because I didn't actually realize that. And the fact that Trinidad actually has a program in your community is making sure that you're actually seeing some of that direct funding award from that settlement for the mortgage crisis. So I was actually like, oh, wow, I perked up because I was like, I have a community that actually is receiving direct funds for this. So with that said, you know, I, I am very excited that they were able to bring another property to the request and make sure that that program has two years of viable projects. I know the applicants here.
Dr. Effer, do you have anything that you would like to add to this conversation?
I think everything is laid out, the application, just that we're excited that we are ready to put our first house on the market for the two that you approved on Stonewall. That sewer line project took a lot longer than we expected. But we are gonna be putting the first house on the market, the second house is in progress. And then these three are next in line for the program. And should, as, as Mr. Yurman said, should last us for another two years.
Any questions? No, no. Okay, no questions. Okay, call vote please.
Debona?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Fermin?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Dr. Effer, really, thank you for taking some of these dilapidated thoughts and turning them into something useful.
Thank you.
Thank you. On item nine, council reports. The Los Angeles County Veterans Council, they're hosting at Fort Wood and the Boo and the Woo like they did last year leading up to October thirty-first. There's also a parade that's gonna transpire on October twenty-eighth, starting at plus fourteen. It's not really part of the Veterans Council, but I just thought I'd mention that.
I had a meeting with the tree board last night and we talked about trees. And on a more serious note, several weeks ago, I was invited to the hospital. They have an advisory committee, it's called the patient and family advisory committee. It's for the hospital. I went and there were a lot of people that attended via Zoom. So if this isn't in your schedule, you can't go, they, they serve lunch. You can, you can attend virtually. And in order to be eligible for the advisory committee, you have to have, either have been a patient at the hospital or the clinic or had a family member who has been a patient within the last three years. So that pretty much covers the majority of the community. But I have two flyers here. I'd like the city to post it if they're there. Yeah, okay, I'll give you this one. That's it?
Oh, yeah, we'll post, please.
Went to the area-wide planning that our city manager held the other day, the other evening. And it was, it was really valuable. There is so much going on in Trinidad that it is astounding and it, it was very exciting. And we had great conversations at our table, the people. And I think the point of it, as I understand, is that we're trying to gather up what we perceive as assets and what we need, which will guide our discussions and strategic planning for what we should be heading towards. So I thought that was a great meeting. I went to the Chili Festival. And I just wanted to comment, I was baffled because I would think, and it was really helpful to hear from the women who came and spoke to us, but I would think that having a festival downtown would actually bring people downtown. But what they said was absolutely true. There was no, nothing going on east of Commercial. And in fact, I went into an art gallery and they were just about to shut down. It was about eleven in the morning, they were like, well, we're just gonna go home because nothing's going on here. And the art gallery across the way wasn't even open. And I was, it really was a moment where I was like, when we have festivals, I'm presuming that brings people downtown. And evidently not. Maybe if they don't know about it or are perceived that it's a festival for just certain people in the town. But I do think that we should take some time to think through what we've heard and make wise decisions about road closing. So I just wanted to say that I also saw what they were speaking of when I was there. And about the communication that they, that issue that they brought up too, I would like to see us get whatever policy together that we're going to have, I don't know if we've done this or not, about the Facebook page. Because what was happening before was incredibly helpful. Having a robust outline of everything that was going on in town, regardless of who was sponsoring it, was very helpful to me as someone who was to get out there and be involved in things. But I can't always sort through everything that's on Facebook or is in social media. It was nice to have a central place. And I think it's a shame that if we have lost that to some extent, I'd really like to see that come back in whatever way that we can make it so that it's not problematic. That's all I have.
Fox America has a meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. You guys are welcome to join us. And then we can catch up and discuss at the work sessions.
As often is the case, my comments will closely parallel Councilman Ogletree's. I like to think it's not that I'm copying her, it's that great minds think alike. So there's more of that thing. I was also able to attend part of, not all, of the area-wide planning, but I was, I was very struck by a couple of things. One, so many of the city staff that were there. And that's very impressive, the city staff would be so engaged after five o'clock. I suspect, you know, many of the people are probably on salary. So at that point, you're decreasing your hourly wage. And no one likes to do that. So I appreciate the engagement, enthusiasm that was demonstrated. And I think it's worthy to mention that. Secondly, it is incredibly exciting to see all the stuff that's happening in town. I really feel like we're on the cusp of some amazing things. The presentation on the Art Space Commons area tied in with the Mitchell. I mean, we have so, so much good things coming down the pike for Trinidad. I think, I say it a lot, but I think the strategic plan done properly, and I want to reiterate, you know, so many people say, well, we spend a lot of money on plans. But this, this plan is going to incorporate, to my knowledge, past plans. So it's gonna be a cohesive document that brings stuff together, is my thought process. And it gives us the roadmap. And it gives us the roadmap to make good steps towards a stronger, more robust economy going forward. I think, if it's at all possible, Mr. Rutter, we can look to incorporate into that strategic plan an operational plan that will, that will give businesses in our community the ability to, to plan for their year. So I thank you guys for coming tonight and bringing that forward. That's hopefully going to make change happen. Working together, we can get that. But it'd be nice if we could be part of that plan. Just one, a couple final observations. I think it's fantastic that we're trying new events. But when you look at some events, like the RAD, they tend to generate a lot of activity in, in a multi-block area, and some, some don't. So I think it's important to size, as already has been mentioned, it's important to size the closure to the event to concentrate activity because that will draw activity. And secondly, when and where possible, I think it's, it's so important to leave, and there's a lot of caveats to this, but to leave events or help ensure events are planned by professionals so that we have as much advertising as is possible. I'm not saying that any event wasn't planned professionally, but it's just important to try and maximize exposure for downtown Trinidad. And if that can be worked into it, it'd be super helpful. That's my comment there.
And I will say that I reiterate what Mr. Williamson was saying about working on the closures downtown. We need to be just working on them. We do have a couple more events coming up this fall. See if we can get something done with that so that they have that opportunity to continue their business the way they, you know, that they, they wanted to continue their business. So let's work on that. One of the things that I, I attended the area-wide planning well. And one of the things that was really great about it is they were looking for suggestions. This probably moved the community board in, just like Mr. Williamson was saying. It was good to see some of our staff that was there to get their input as well. Because at the staff level, a lot of times, there were ten meetings, but they did that night, and they gave their input. And it was good to see, there was three different groups. I was not in that particular group, but I was in another group. And the group that I was in, we did have pretty good spirited, you know, conversation about just questions. The biggest thing that came out of it was the communication factor. That was one of the biggest, biggest things that really came out, the communicating, like what happened with you guys. So I think that's, that's really a huge thing that we need to really work on. One of the things that I think that we're having in it's having a detriment is getting some of the information out. With the way the newspaper is posting paper now just once a week, it's a detriment to the elderly people, and unfortunately, they have a reason why they're only doing Friday. And, but not everybody has emails or even photos of the elderly people. And that's going to be the struggle. That's one of the conversations that came out that night of the area-wide planning. How do we reach these people going forward so that they're not left in the shadows? So I think that that's something that we as a, through this area-wide planning, that I think needs to be worked on quite heavily. The Gates Foundation was here. They had about, I don't know, 15 people, approximately 15 people, that they came down and had their, was that their quarterly meeting?
Yeah.
That they had here in Trinidad. And they have, they were here for three days. And they had the meetings at the Space Great Commons area. The second day, they went up to Fisher's Peak. They toured Fisher's Peak. And because they were, they helped fund not only the Commons area or the Space Great project, but they also funded some, with some funding with Fisher's Peak. So it was good for them to get out and see what they funded. And they were really excited, not only of, I mean, for both projects. And it was nice to just, there was a couple of people that I'd met before, but as well as just meeting the rest of them. It was just a good opportunity to visit with those people. As everyone knows, you know, we had the unveiling of the plaque for Jim Fernandez, the North Lake project. That was really, really well-attended. It had been 75 to 100 people. And it was really good. I want to thank the newspaper for being here and showing that it's well done. So thank you for that.
For sure.
I also attended the Noah's Ark, and I was locked up. And a few people actually paid to keep me in there, so.
It was interesting. We can have a chance for 100.
The last thing I did, and I mentioned it last week actually, that I did attend the Fort Carson 9/11 Memorial Event. And that was quite interesting, if that was something like that. Mr. Rutter?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to let everyone know, our consultant for the Gulf Course will be here in his work session on Monday to do his final report with you all. So I know that's been a long time coming, but excited to hear his results and suggestions for us to move forward. And then the other things that I was going to mention have already been mentioned. I do want to highlight two things, though. The area-wide planning meeting, we will get our results back from our consultants, stay on tech quickly within the next couple of weeks. And we'll want to put that out to the public so that we can see the results of that. But I think it was a terrific meeting, and it was a great opportunity for our residents to come give us some feedback for what's going on downtown.
And you'll be able to insert that into the strategic.
Yes, yeah. As far as the strategic planning goes, I've already sent them our Parkshank Rec Master Plan, our Comprehensive Plan, our Housing Needs Assessment. So they'll get copies of the Strategic Plan, Gulf Course, also the Riverwalk Design. All of that will be funneled into the strategic planning process, which I think is tremendously important. And then the last thing, Mayor, you had mentioned the event for Jim Fernandez. I just wanted to thank city staff who were involved in organizing that event. It was very, very nice. And people here very, very much cared about Mr. Fernandez, and it was very evident by the commitment they had in putting that event together.
Yeah, they did a great job of organizing the whole thing when we started hearing about it. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Mayor council members. My report this evening is not very legal, but I wanted, I just want to say, this is about ducks. Ducks and three guys from the Public Works Department. So last week, more domestic ducks were dumped in Central Park Pond. Three flightless ducks that clearly were defenseless. And they, beautiful ducks, if I could add. And by the way, if I had technological skills, I would do a slideshow for you because I have photographs of all this. But anyway, one morning, there were three additional ducks that were in the Central Park Pond. And I tried to catch them, and like all my efforts at catching ducks, it didn't, it didn't work. So anyway, the next morning, I was in the park, in Central Park, and the ducks had gone onto the ball field. And they were in, in the ball field. So I notified a number of my friends here in City Hall. Next thing you know, there were three Public Works employees, Public Works Department employees, Rich Gallegos, Ted Munho, and Michael Wells, who were looking for me so that we could all go catch the ducks. So we did, we did, we got the ducks. And they currently, this is not the point of my story, but they currently reside in my backyard with my other ducks. But these guys dropped whatever they were doing, and they went out, and they helped me catch these ducks.
You can get your ducks in a row.
Yes, I can, that's right. That's right. Metaphorically and.
Have you ever been to the Peabody Hotel in Orlando?
No, no, but I've seen that.
I've been there a couple of times where they take the ducks down in the morning.
Right, yeah.
They take them back in the evening. So that's what you need to get you a truck.
I do, I need a duck felt in the manse downs, yeah.
Why don't we get you a suit?
Exactly, that's right. But I just want to thank these guys. And also, because there's going to be dredging soon, I had been trying to catch the one remaining park duck. And so Sunday morning, I had a couple of municipal colleagues help me, Ms. Garrett, Ms. Valincic, and Ms. Valinc, Ms. Valincic's daughter Katie, who helped me. Again, we didn't catch the duck, but it was very nice of them to dedicate a Sunday morning to helping me, once again, make an idiot of myself trying to catch the duck, who I think is uncatchable.
This is a city employee.
But it was not in city time. Yeah, that was right. That's not the takeaway I want you to have. That's right, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, on to item 11, executive session. Item 11A for a conference of the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specifically, under the CRAS, section 24-6-402 for B, election matters. And item B, a conference of the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal, legal questions under the CRAS, section 24-6-402 for B, and/or for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiations under the CRAS. Section 24-6-402 for E, a property matter. Motion to go into executive session. Second?
Second.
More votes?
Debona?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. It is time for a break.